Would like to call to order the July 17th, 2017 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners meeting. Welcome. It's good to have everybody with us tonight. We're happy to have, well, we're happy, we're not happy that we don't have anybody to present the colors tonight, so would you please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we are happy to have with us tonight Pastor Bob Page from Emmanuel Baptist Church for our invocation.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, let us pray. Dearly Fathers, we come before you tonight. We thank you for each person here, Father. We thank you for each family that's represented. We thank you for our leaders to lead our county and manage the affairs in our county in a very godly manner, in a manner that is great stewardship, Father, and great vision. We pray that you would bless them tonight as they make important decisions. We pray, Father, that each citizen in this county would lift them up in prayer and would be good citizens, Father, to not only support them, but also to support them financially through our taxes, Father, and to support them, Father, by participating in the process of being good citizens, Father. And we pray that you would continue to bless this county, Father. Help us, Father, to do your will and to bring glory and honor to your name. And we pray, Father, for the law enforcement community here in our county, Father, for the Sheriff's Department that you bless and protect them, Father, for our police departments here in Concord and also in Kannapolis, and for our fire departments and our first responders, and, Father, for those that protect our country across this country and across the world through our armed forces that you would protect and guide them, Father. We pray that your blessing would be upon this country, Father. We love you and we praise you, Father. We ask all these things in Jesus' name and for His sake. Amen.
Thank you. We very much appreciate you being with us tonight. First item on our agenda is the approval or correction of the minutes, and you all have copies of those before you in our agenda packet. Do I hear a motion to approve or correct the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes and we move to approval of the agenda. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page 149.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes and we move to recognitions and presentations. We are happy to have Londa Strong from Active Living and Parks to come and offer recognition to our Cabarrus County participants in the National Senior Games. Welcome.
Thank you, and we really appreciate you allowing us to be here tonight to recognize some of our seniors that just went down to Birmingham, Alabama for the National Senior Games competition. So there are two people that have asked if they would say, just a brief, Tony, statement in our advisory council meeting this morning, they had some good things to say, and I just wanted them to share with you if that's good. I know Commissioner Honeycutt has already-
Well, I've heard rumors that that might be a little risky, but we would love to hear what they have to say.
I'll let Myra Baumgartner come first, please.
I thought she was joking. Now, you've got to remember that this is aging out loud. That's our goal. Now, the National Senior Games in Birmingham, Alabama was what a blessed experience, and the stories abound, but I will not share all of those except for one. I didn't say, "Thank you, Myra, thank you," except for one. We did the parade of athletes, about 13,000 old folks, and we had quite the little distance to walk, but we had quite the contingency from North Carolina, and we were, we stood proud, but there was a mother and her daughter and her son-in-law. And we guided them and helped them get into the big coliseum, and he jokingly said, "She walks with a walker at home." But the daughter was on one side and the son-in-law was on the other, and we, the Cabarrus County folks, just sort of guided them in, and we helped this lady get up into the bleachers before the program started, and we just whispered to the son-in-law, "What event does your mother-in-law do?" He looked at us and responded, "The hundred-yard dash." And that's the way the week went. Unbelievable. Now, she walks with a walker at home, she ran the hundred-yard dash in Birmingham. But I heard this mantra when Bugs and I went to the state, and it has stuck with me. Humana, who is a big sponsor of the Senior Games and do a beautiful job, their young CEO just did a phenomenal job that night at the program. But this mantra is good for all of us to hear. We don't stop playing when we get old. We get old when we stop playing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Toni Swick. She had some wonderful words to say, too.
They said they keep it clean. I just want to, I'm a transplant from New Jersey, and I've had such a wonderful experience since I've been here. It was extremely inspiring for me, and as I said at the meeting today, don't identify us with a rocking chair or mothballs because that's not where we're at. And at this state of our lives, to see what went on with the elderly was absolutely incredible, and I thank you for your support, and I love living here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing them to come up and say a few things because it was, it was very inspiring this morning at the meeting. Anita Helms, who is the chairperson of our advisory council and is also an ambassador for our Senior Games program, is going to come up and call the names out, and Susan Donaldson is going to present each one of them with a plaque.
Thank you, Londa, and also thank you for allowing us to be here. Cabarrus Senior Games is coordinated by the Cabarrus County Active Living and Parks Department. It is a year-round wellness program for adults 50 and older, and of the participants who qualified for the National Games at the 2016 Cabarrus Senior Games and North Carolina Senior Game State Finals, 14 of our athletes traveled to Birmingham, Alabama, and competed at the National Senior Games, June 3rd through 15th of this year. These 14 athletes range in age from 51 to 90, representing Cabarrus County and North Carolina very well, earning four gold, two silver, two bronze medals, as well as six other top-seven finishes. And this is among, how many people? 14,000 so people? So we're very proud of them. So at this time, we would like to introduce the competitors, tell you the events they competed, and present each one with a specific certificate. First is Mark Allen, who's tennis mixed doubles. Myra Baumgartner, tennis doubles. Janet Buck, bowling singles and doubles. H.L. Ronald Flanders, track and field.
He's got a lot of hardware on-
Pardon's clangy. Renee Goolsbee, tennis mixed doubles. Walt Jakubek, cycling.
I'm the oldest participant. I was one of the first guys, 1987. I went to St. Louis. I just separated my shoulder. I had to drive from our house to St. Louis with one arm. I came in sixth place. Finally, I'm 90 years old. I feel like guys that are 70. What you like to do, you just keep doing it.
Congratulations, Londa.
Thank you very much.
Flo Kendall, horseshoes. Toni Swick, field events. Jennifer Skinner, bowling, singles and doubles. And Jennifer's one of our youngest participants.
I am the baby of the games, so I hear all the time.
And we have two people who could not be with us tonight, Kathy Dorr, tennis singles, and Marvin Martin in archery. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize these athletes who are living proof that George Bernard Shaw knew what he was talking about when he said, "We don't stop playing because we grow old. We grow old because we stop playing." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You are an inspiration to all of us, and we certainly appreciate the way you represented Cabarrus County, and look forward to seeing you back here again next year. Okay, next up, we have from Human Resources, recognition of a retirement from the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office, and we're glad to have Brad Riley, our sheriff, with us tonight to make that presentation.
Good evening. I guess it's very appropriate to do that right after the Senior Games for us to honor. I like the way that was set up. No, we're, we're here to honor Sergeant Eric Sossman, who retires. Actually, he still has a little bit more time left, but he's got some vacation between now and then, but he leaves at the end of August 1st of September, and will be retiring with 30 years of credible service at the Sheriff's Office. I feel like I shouldn't have to go through some of these things, but I don't want to miss anything because Eric's been involved in a lot, and I, I want to make sure I catch those things, but I've worked, I've had the fortune of working alongside of him for most of those 30 years, so I feel like I could go right down each one of them, but Eric has been involved in a lot at Sheriff's Office, and we'll, we'll talk about a few of those. First, I want to recognize his, his wife and son, they're here, and also his family, his mother and his sister, and other family members. We want to thank y'all for coming, and they've been a big supporter of Eric for his entire career, and very supportive out in the community, the Sheriff's Office as well, which is appreciated. He began his career in 1989 under Sheriff Robert Kennedy. His first assignment was in communications. His first day, he says, in communications was September 22nd, 1989, which was Hugo. And he said that when he went home that evening, he got to thinking, "What in the world have I signed up for?" During his first, and as you go back to 1989, we didn't have 911 at the time. Everything was pretty much done by a punch clock, pencil, and writing, and then he was also there during the years that we implemented the enhanced 911 system, and we went enhanced immediately, which brought with it the emergency medical dispatch, which was a new animal, and he was, he was there to be a part of that implementation as well. Worked there for seven and a half years, and he moved into the Civil Division, and he also became the first, at that time, it was DSS, Department of Social Services, and he became the first DSS representative officer, and he served a lot of the court orders for child cases, and also worked as a bailiff for Department of Social Services, and he was the first officer from our agency to be assigned to that as a full-time employee. We have two that do that now. He did that for, he also, he did that for about seven years and was promoted into our crime prevention, where he also became our resident agency photographer. Of course, he kind of knew he would assume that after Terry Black had retired, but he did a fantastic job of getting himself up to, to the speed that was necessary to help with that. He also helped with our crime scenes. At that time, he also was helpful in implementing Crime Stoppers, which had been around, went away, and then we helped bring it back. He was the liaison for the Sheriff's Office. Not only did he bring it back here, but he also became the president of North Carolina Association for Crime Stoppers and served in that capacity very well, so we appreciated that. Let's see. Also, in 2008, when he served as the president, that was also the year that we started the first recruitment retention officer in the Sheriff's Office through our Hiring and Training Division, and he was the first officer to do that as well, so he's had a couple of firsts. Way back in the, I don't know, I guess it was early 2000s or so, or mid-2000s, we started a SWAT team. He and I served in that capacity together and did that for a while and again, so he was on the first front end of, of that implementation as well. He's been a firearms instructor, loves firearms. He has been a part of a lot of new technology changes, as you can imagine, over the last 25, 28 years to the range, not only with upfitting and renovating the range, but also implementing new target technologies and all the different things that go in with that. And he, he led a lot of those things. Eric's the kind of guy that, over the years, no matter what, whether I watched him do it or whether I asked him to partake of some of those things, he was one that if you gave him the responsibility, would ask you a million questions because he wanted to make sure he'd done it exactly right, and he wouldn't finish until he was done. And he, and then when he finished that task, there was a little more lace on it than, than you expected. He just wanted to go the extra mile, and he wanted to make sure that, I'm going to put my pride into, into what I do, and that's very much appreciated this day and time. About 2011, Captain Patterson retired, and he had headed up our coordination for Law Day, which is a big undertaking, and it's kind of a sidebar thing, and I went to Eric, who had helped us a lot up to that point, and asked him if he'd take on that responsibility, and he even took that to the next level. So done a fantastic job of coordinating those, and there's a lot that goes into that annual Law Day event, and he really put his heart and soul. In fact, one of the things that, that he has mentioned a number of times to me in one-on-one discussions was his desire to put himself and his heart into what Law Day stands for, and that is those men and women here, and not just here in Cabarrus County, but especially the ones here in Cabarrus County that have paid the ultimate sacrifice their life, and to get in and learn not only who those individuals were, but who they were, and not just their name, but to find out exactly how they, you know, and to, to join their families, to, to see exactly how they served, and he did a fantastic job of doing that. During his 30-year career, he's had, as I've said, he's had a chance to experience a lot of first things, and sometimes that's not easy to do, but we're glad that, I, I think he would look back and say that I'm appreciative of the fact that I got to learn a lot, I also got to experience a lot of things as they were coming in, and new, and whatnot, and I think that he has said that amongst a number of things that he plans to do in his retirement is, is he's a ham radio enthusiast, but I think his wife will probably have a honeydew list for him. He's still got Nathan, who is his son, and I hear him talk about camping and Boy Scouts and stuff, so I think he'll be really, really, really busy, but Eric, it's been a pleasure. We've really, really enjoyed having you around. We're going to miss having you to, to do those projects and to take care of those little things, but hopefully we'll still, still see your face around and come and see us. Congratulations.
Well, the only thing I want to say is I do appreciate everything that y'all have done over the years. Several of you, like, we've worked together on a lot of things over the years, and I've been around, so, and of course, without family, I couldn't be where I'm at now, and my family's not just the ones here, but also the people I work with. They're very important to me. Of course, Chief Hunt, Captain Esbuth, you know, and Mother and Father and all have been good over the years, but I do appreciate everything that the county has done, and I'll miss it, of course, but I guess it's time to move on to something else. I don't know, maybe there'll be a sport that I can participate in, in the Senior Games. So I do appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me just say, on behalf of the Cabarrus County Commissioners and the citizens of the county, we want to thank you for your service to our community, to your family, for sharing you with us for that many months and our years, and you were leaving some really big shoes to fill. So good luck on that, and congratulations, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate your service, and, and the list of things you've accomplished is very long, but certainly the Law Day stands out, and I know they're definitely going to miss you when they put that together next year. It's a very meaningful event.
I think we've got somebody that can step up, and I have a lot of confidence in you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, next we have from Planning and Development, a recognition, and we're happy to have Kelly Sifford to make that presentation.
Thank you so much. I'm very excited to be here tonight to recognize Tim Gray. He has achieved a level of expertise that very few people across the state have. There are approximately 250 inspectors across the state who have Level 3 across all five trades. Three of them work here now, so we're very excited about that and very proud of that. We're working hard to keep, keep up with EMS around here. So Tim is here, along with his wife and grandson. There you go, that's your recognition certificate. Is there anything you'd like to say to him?
Thanks for letting me work here.
Thank you, Kelly and Tim. That's, that is, that is quite an, quite an accomplishment, and we appreciate the service you offer to, to our county.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a quick comment, that not only does he offer that service to our county, but as somebody that's in that industry, many times developers and contractors and construction managers come from outside of town to do projects here, and where the rubber meets the road, their guys in the field deal daily with our building inspectors. So he's wearing a hat that says Cabarrus County to people from all over, really all over the world now. People do construction projects all over. So thank you very much for doing such a good job in representing our county.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a proclamation honoring the memory and achievements of Frances Ward Black Holland. Many of us knew her as Fran Black, for many years, and later Fran Holland, but she was someone that was very involved in the lives of a lot of students in Cabarrus County and many others, and I'll read that proclamation at this time. Whereas Frances Ward Black Holland was born on January 20th, 1927, and grew up in Mount Olive, North Carolina, until she left to attend Meredith College in Raleigh, and whereas in 1951, Frances began teaching in Cabarrus County near the start of what would become a 30-year teaching career, and whereas she taught at JW Cannon School, A.L. Brown High School, and Concord High School before retiring in 1983, and whereas Frances also taught Sunday School for over 30 years, initially at the First Presbyterian Church in Kannapolis, and later Trinity United Methodist Church in Kannapolis. And whereas Fran devoted her life to the service of our community through leadership and engagement in many civic organizations, including the Concord Rotary Club, Concord Cabarrus Business and Professional Women, the Kannapolis YMCA Board, and many more, and whereas Frances received many notable awards for her service, including the Order of the Longleaf Pine, and whereas Frances Ward Black Holland died on July 2nd, 2017, now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby pays tribute to Frances Ward Black Holland, recognizing her outstanding life of service to Cabarrus County and its citizens, and extends deepest sympathies to the family. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt this proclamation.
As a former student of Mrs. Black, I would make the motion that we adopt this proclamation.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and hopefully we'll be able to pass along copies of that to her family members. Next, we have a proclamation honoring the memory and achievements of Kathy Kitts, and I'll read that at this time. Whereas Catherine Kathy Lynn Kitts was born on March 3rd, 1969, in Welsh, West Virginia, before moving to Midland, North Carolina in 1990, and whereas Kathy served on the Midland Town Council for four years before serving two additional terms as Midland Mayor. And whereas Kathy served as an ambassador and champion for the town of Midland, its citizens and quality of life, and whereas Kathy demonstrated immeasurable strength, determination, and courage in the face of a six-year battle against breast cancer that ended on June 17th, 2017. And whereas Kathy's life impacted others, leaving family and friends, citizens and neighbors as better people for knowing her, now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby pays tribute to Catherine Kathy Lynn Kitts, former mayor of Midland, in recognition of her tenacious pursuit of progress for Midland and its residents, and her devotion to public service in Cabarrus County. We further urge the citizens of Cabarrus County to remember Kathy Kitts, an extraordinary person who made a lasting imprint on our community and hearts. And I would entertain a motion to adopt that proclamation.
I would be happy to make the motion to adopt.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. That's two very significant people that our community has lost recently. Now, we come to our informal public comments. Do not have any of the yellow cards that have been turned in tonight, but if anybody has a matter they would like to discuss with the board, please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to our consent agenda, and you all have copies of that before you. These are items that we have discussed at length at our work session earlier this month. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up is new business, and first we have an economic development investment for Project Hercules, and we're happy to have Robbie Carney with us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you this evening. I'm here on behalf of Project Hercules. My name is Robert Carney. I represent the Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation. The TPA Group, or Project Hercules, is proposing an industrial facility development in Kannapolis. The proposed 1 million square foot industrial building would be constructed on a 100-plus acre parcel at 6501 Macedonia Church Road, near the intersection of Highway 73 and Kannapolis Parkway. The estimated real property investment is $50 million. Their investment exceeds the minimum requirements of the Economic Development Grant Program. TPA Group has requested consideration of infrastructure assistance- TPA Group has requested consideration of infrastructure assistance for off-site improvements in lieu of a traditional property tax grant. The grant would be provided in the form of reimbursement for the developer's infrastructure costs and will be paid following the completion of that infrastructure work. The estimated investment of $50 million would equate to a $1,487,500 in infrastructure incentives based on an 85% of the increased tax value that would typically be paid back over the next five years from the county. The TPA Group currently has multiple tenants interested in the site, but only one preferred tenant. That preferred tenant estimates creating 600 full-time jobs. On behalf of the Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation, I want to thank you again for your time and consideration this evening. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Carney. Okay, this does require a public hearing, so hearing no questions. I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to comment on this project. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. This is certainly an impressive project. 600 jobs, a million square feet, and $50 million investment. We're, this is the kind of things that a lot of counties in North Carolina would certainly love to have the opportunity to talk about. So what's your pleasure on this proposal, Commissioners?
I would make a motion to approve an economic development investment agreement between Project Hercules and Cabarrus County for the reimbursement of infrastructure improvements for an amount up to $1,487,500 and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Do I hear a second to that motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we are delighted to have another economic development project to talk about. And we're happy to have Samantha Grass to join Mr. Carney at the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Samantha Grass, Recruitment Project Manager for Cabarrus EDC. Commissioners, just want to thank you again for your support for Project Hercules and also for your consideration tonight for Project Laser. Classic Graphics, Project Laser is considering expanding their footprint in the region and opening operation here in Cabarrus County. Classic Graphics is a commercial printing company that already has a location in the Charlotte area. They are considering leasing approximately 100,000 square foot of space at the Concord Airport Business Park Phase 3 that is located there on DeRida Road. They would be leasing a portion of the 300,000 square foot facility. It was industrial spec facility that is currently under construction and will be completed soon. Classic Graphics estimates they will invest over 1.5 million in personal property over the next three years at the Concord location. Their plans also include hiring 30 full-time employees and also transferring 20 employees from their Charlotte location. The average wage is $37,080. Their investment does exceed the minimum requirements of the Economic Development Grant. We have included in your information the Cabarrus County Grant Analysis that is based on that estimated 1.5 million investment. A three-year, 85% economic development grant is $26,775. Net revenue to the county during that same three-year grant term is $4,725. We are asking for your consideration of a three-year, 85% grant and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Samantha. Okay, thank you. This does call for a public hearing as well. So I would open the public hearing at this time and invite anybody forward that would like to talk about the project. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And what's your pleasure on this one, Commissioners?
I will make a motion to approve an economic development investment agreement. Three years, 85% between Project Laser and Cabarrus County and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You know, one of the things that I noticed in, of course, we're talking about a project that goes from, one project, 600 jobs, another project, 30 or 20?
30.
50 total, right. And of course, you know, some folks look at that and say, well, a lot of those jobs are coming from out of Cabarrus County. But I always like to point out to people that even when we have those folks that come from outside the county to work here, they eat lunch in our restaurants, they buy gas at our service stations on their way to and from work. They leave a lot of money in the Cabarrus County economy. So that's something I think is very desirable. Are there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Next up is from Cabarrus County Schools. A funding request for the first phase of Harrisburg area new elementary school. We're happy to have Tim Louder with us to talk about that.
Good evening Commissioners. I'm here tonight on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools to enter to the first phase of our construction project for the Southwest Elementary School in the Harrisburg area. This project here, the funding we're asking for today consists of the architecture fees, some administration fees, and the land itself for the purchase there, and also some engineering costs associated with the geotechnical and all that sort of thing goes along with the design phase of the project.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Louder?
I think I know the answer to this question, but just to be on the safe side. This fits into the plan and you have it on the construction plan and all. Just making sure. Thank you. I felt like that, but I just wanted to hear it one more time.
Construction funding is in January.
I know sometimes we got a little head on a couple, I'm just making sure that way.
March, January, yeah, next year. Funding cycles next year.
I think the question that I would ask is, do you anticipate a time that you will come to us and say, we've got plenty of schools and plenty of space and we don't need to build anymore?
I attended meetings this week for three subdivisions telling about 1,000 lots. So I doubt that, sir.
Wow.
I'd like to think I could, but I doubt it.
Yeah, as we've discussed before, it's a challenge to keep up with that growth, but it is a problem that a lot of other places would like to have.
That's true.
Any other questions for Mr. Louder? All right, do I hear a motion on this request?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve $2,334,500 in Phase 1 funding for a new elementary school in the Harrisburg area, including the appropriate budget revision and related capital project ordinances.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up we have Item 4, update to the Bardell contract. And County Manager Downs will talk with us about that.
Thank you. Yeah, this is Zachias Law Firm, represented by Mark Bardell. He's our attorney that oversees our tax foreclosure process. He's done an excellent job for many years for us and then helps to keep our tax rate, our tax collection rate at a maximum. So it's, this is an updated contract. They have not requested an increase in several years. This is the first one. It has been reviewed by our tax staff as well as finance and by Mr. Cook as well. And so we are recommending approval of this updated contract. The changes are, there is an increase in the per transaction fee. There is also a review period every year and a half. And at that time, we will review any requested increases or with documents showing increased expenses incurred. And then if it was agreed upon for that increase, then it would be implemented in the following budget year.
Okay, any questions for the county manager?
Mike, you said it'd been, I can't remember the exact word. You used a while since the rate had changed? How long?
I don't, Rich, I think, I believe I heard eight years.
I think it's been eight years.
Eight, okay.
And part of the reason the increase was requested, not only because of the amount of time that's elapsed, is because the county is now taking over collections for the city of Concord. And they have had quite a number of tax foreclosures in the past. So he'll be instituting actions that will be jointly in behalf of Concord and Cabarrus County.
Okay, any additional questions? Okay, do I hear a motion in regard to this proposal?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated contract with Mark Bardell and to authorize county manager to execute the contract.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to appointments to boards and committees. First up is Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Joanne Yurchison's term on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee ends July 31st. Ms. Yurchison has been a longtime member and has chosen this time to resign. The Regional Ombudsman reported Ms. Yurchison has volunteereded on the committee since July of 2004 and has been integral to the committee's success over the years. In addition, Ann Holland's term on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee ended June 30th. She would like to serve another term. She also serves on the Human Services Advisory Board. An exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Joanne Yurchison from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee roster and thank her for her many years of service. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Ann Holland to the Adult Care Community, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2020, including an exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to appointments to the Cabarrus County Youth Commission. The following appointments, two to AL Brown and two to Mount Pleasant are recommended by the Cabarrus County Youth Commission. Amelia Eaton, Mount Pleasant High School. McKay Burke, Mount Pleasant High School. Jasmine Luter, AL Brown High School. And Billy Burris, AL Brown High School. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Amelia Eaton and McKay Burke as Mount Pleasant High School representatives and Jasmine Luter and Billy Burris as AL Brown High School representatives to the Cabarrus County Youth Commission for two-year terms ending June 30th, 2019. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Excuse me. Next we have appointments and removals to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council turns of appointments for Nathaniel Nust, Chief District Court Judge Designee, Carolyn Carpenter, United Way or other nonprofits, Heather Mobley, juvenile defense attorney, and Connie Philbeck, At Large, ended June 30th, 2017. All are willing to serve another term. An exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy will be needed for Judge Nust and Ms. Mobley. Ms. Carpenter has served on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council since 2006. An exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council voted at their June 21st meeting to recommend them for reappointment. A letter from the Chair, Troy Barnhart, is attached in that regard. In addition, Catherine Fitzgerald, substance abuse professional, has resigned from her position on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. It is requested to remove her name from the roster. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Nathaniel Nust, Carolyn Carpenter, Heather Mobley, and Connie Philbeck to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for two-year terms ending June 30th, 2019, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy for Ms. Carpenter and an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy for Judge Nust and Ms. Mobley. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Judge Nust lives in Cabarrus County in Harrisburg. So I'm not, why do we have to have an exception for him?
That I'm not sure about. If he does live.
Well, we've got it in the motion if we need it.
We're covered if we need it, yeah.
I just was curious, because he lives in my neighborhood.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would also entertain a motion to remove Catherine Fitzgerald from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council roster and thank her for her many years of service. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to appointments and removals from the Cabarrus County Planning and Zoning Commission. Membership needs to be realigned on the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill regular member positions that will be vacated in August 2017. We have a chart, or I have a chart, I'm not sure if you all have copies of that or not. You do have it in your agenda. Including the recommendations to fill vacancies created by alternate members moving into regular member seats. And I understand this is something that typically is done, that those alternate members, after going through that period, move into these other seats as they are vacated. The recommendations also include the appointment of two new members to fill alternate positions and a new member to fill the Harrisburg seat, which has been vacant since Mr. Griffin resigned from the commission several months ago. So you see those positions there and explanations of the ends of the terms and the moving around to fill those positions, which come with, some with residency requirements and then others as alternates. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Andrew Graham, Shannon Frye, and Aaron Ritchie from the Cabarrus County Planning and Zoning Commission roster and thank them for their service. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Charles Paxton to the Harrisburg area seat, Chris Pinto into the eastern area seat, James Leitaker into the northwest area position. Pinto into the eastern area seat, James Lydicar into the northwest area position, Adam Dagenhart at large, Steve Wise at large, Holly Grimsley as an alternate, Jerry Wood as an alternate, and Andrew Nance as an alternate. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. You will notice that there are various reports included in our agenda that I hope you will all look at, as well as the public. And at this time, we have, in general, comments by board members, if anyone has anything they would like to report on. I will mention that I do have this Certificate of Safety Achievement, First Year Gold, in recognition of the outstanding safety and health efforts of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners that resulted in a substantial reduction of injuries and illnesses, and the promotion of safer working conditions in 2016. And my assumption is, this is not us, but the larger group of county employees, so we do not take credit for that. Oh, this is for us, so we have-
It is specifically for you.
Well, I probably wouldn't have mentioned that if I'd have known that. So, we have not injured each other during the year.
That's right.
So, that is certainly something to be proud of. Are there any other reports? Okay, we do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, that would be for pending litigation in economic development. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A, 3 and 4, to discuss pending litigation in economic development matters. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you for joining us on TV and in person tonight.